For the Richmond Board of Education Public Meeting, Wednesday, April 24th. Welcome, everyone. Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hunkam Language Group, whose traditional and unique territories reach, learn, and live. First item, we have no recognition of visitor, but we do have some announcements by trustee. Who would like, go ahead, trustee Hamaguchi?
Education Week, week 24. The Richmond School District is proud to celebrate Education Week every, each year. This special week shines a spotlight on exceptional achievements and efforts unfolded across school districts across France-wide, including our own. During Education Week, we showcase the priorities of our board's strategic plan, including inspired learners, equity inclusion, and active learning community. Education Week is the time to acknowledge our commitment to those, sorry, sorry, to these, and the positive impact they have on our student educational journeys. We invite committee members to explore district website. We are featuring some of the remarkable learning experience happening in our schools. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sargent.
Thank you very much. April is Seek Heritage Month in Canada. Seek Heritage Month was officially recognized by the Government of Canada in 2019. In our district, the Seek Heritage Month is celebrated through shared learning of the rich cultural and spiritual legacy of Sikhism. East learning opportunities include a series of Seek Heritage posters displayed at equal sight. We provide a platform to celebrate and learn about contributions of Sikh individuals to society, from understanding of Sikh values and fostering inclusivity within diverse communities. This not only honors history and tradition, but also encourages dialogue, addition, and appreciation of the Sikh communities enduring impact locally and globally. And then in May, May serves as a special opportunity to celebrate both Asian and Jewish Heritage Month. Schools recognize the rich contributions and cultural diversity of these communities in our schools and district by incorporating diverse curricula and sources. As students build pride in their varied identities and strengths from our collective diversity. Our goal is to foster a deeper understanding, respect, appreciation for the histories, traditions, and experience of Asian and Jewish members of our community, creating inclusive environments that honor richness of our society for all.
Thank you, trustee Dublany.
Yes, Mental Health Week is May 6 to 12. The Richmond School District recognizes Mental Health Week in Canada, taking place this year. And as noted by the Canadian Mental Health Association, this year's theme is a call to be kind. Recognizing the healing power of compassion where kindness connects us all. The goal of this week is strategies to support mental health in our communities. We've recognized half throughout the district range of roles supporting student mentors. And while the remains commit to mental health literacy, which is the knowledge and understanding how to develop, maintain mental well, as well as identify factors and the signs of mental health challenges. Mental health literacy is about providing tools to access help when needed and reduce stigma around the topic of mental health. In keeping with the board's strategic plan, goal to foster resilient and healthy lifelong learners on ongoing supports as well as events throughout the years such as Mental Health Week. Mark the ongoing district-wide commitment toward mental health in our school, full community. Thank you.
Trustee.
Thank you very much, chairperson. April 12, 2020 is the Nash Day of mourning, a day to remember and honor those who have lost their lives or have been injured due to work-related accidents. As a mark of respect, flags are flown at half-mast and ceremonies are held across the country and around the world. This day also serves as a reminder for us to renew our commitment to creating safer workplaces for all employees. Let's continue the work and continue to work together to ensure that every worker returns home safely at the end of their workday. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, are there any materials not included in patches available to the public?
Chairperson, all materials have been included in the board meeting package and available on the district's website. Thank you, chairperson.
I'm going to look for some of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Go ahead, trustee Beliza.
You're asking for a memo.
No, I asked if there were any additions or corrections. So you ready for to move? Okay, thank you. Seconder, trustee Hamaguchi. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. And we have no presentations this evening, briefs, or special recognition. We are at questions for the public. Please move forward.
Thank you, Liz Baberstock, President of Richmond Teachers Association. And I'm actually going to ask a question that I, actually, sometimes you're trying to figure a question you're going to ask. But my question is actually in regards to the fiscal plan that is part of the package. And I wanted to know, is this, is this expectation by the ministry to provide this depth of information? Or is this something unique to Richmond?
Through the chair, I am happy to respond to your question. Thank you so much for the question. This is a new requirement from the Ministry of Education. It was implemented last year. So last year is our first fiscal plan. The ministry actually requires more year fiscal plan. Typically, it's three years fiscal plan. And the purpose of that is transparency in the board to transparently communicate that information to our partner, of course, our community staff, education partners. And also to create a narrative where, you know, we align the budget plan with our strategic plan.
Okay, thank you for that. And I actually upped the work that has gone into this because really it does a really good job of aligning the district's story through numeracy. I mean, it is, it is a really good story. It's accessible, it's transparent. So it may be requirement, but it's a very good job here reviewing pressures, the revenues, the expenses. For the art executive, we always appreciate page 24 of that fiscal plan, which outlines the extreme enhancement fund. And I could ask some questions in regards to that. I could ask you, how come rem remedy has dropped this year? About $200,000. But I actually know answer to that. Enrollment helps, definitely. When you have bigger schools, it's actually easily easy to address class size and composition. But I also have processes that have gone on behind the scenes because it is involved working with human resources and really understand what has gone into best efforts and having the ability to see even greater compliance with the registered language. And that actually, it isn't told in here, but that is actually really important because that matters to members on the ground is compliance with the language. And that is a positive story out of growth. I also appreciate the page 60 on the financial ability and where recruitment retention is highlighted. And the things that are being done to address recruitment and retention within Richmond. I do think that there's more work for the ministry to do in this area and hopefully look at things, things like that in terms of their force strategy. The district is supporting 2025 signed teachers, contract TTOs. That's all. But that is something that the ministry should be actually doing because that's helping get teachers who can be available for classrooms when, etc. So I do want to just say that I really appreciate that part. The staffing challenges and some of the other additional supports that I hope the ministry actually really looks at is supporting additional train for teachers. We need more specialist teachers. That's an additional cost. It can have some benefit in your salary downline, but it is and can be very expensive, up to $30,000 in order to become, get some extra credentials in order to help support students. So that's important. I really, really appreciate work of resources to get agreement with City University to run a cohort. But these are things really think strategic the ministry should focus on. Therefore, kind of always in and ask sort of a question. As I know you're looking ahead to your budget preparation, to make your request to the ministry as part of their processes, it's this story on this page, including the ministry grant revenue and the continued pressures that aren't completely funded. So that is aligned, the benefit increases, but those aren't funded. The change in just CPP to EI, those are things that aren't funded and they continually add pressures of a school district. So thank you for all that work. Thanks for answering question and good luck with your deliberations.
Ms. Baberstock. We now have from our superintendent.
Very much, Madam Chair. Your trustees, I'd like to begin by acknowledging that today is Administrative Professional Day. Obviously, I would like to appreciate our appreciation to our dedicated and professional staff who work at schools and in central departments to support students, staff, and families across our district. I would certainly appreciate their efforts because as I often say, we will not be able to operate without our dedicated staff. Each month, we have the opportunity to, as part of my executive report, to showcase the good work that is happening across our district that is connected to our strategic priorities. And reports that are, that also through the videos that we share in the publorum, underscore the board statement to supporting students every day exceptionally awesome. And it's something we can all take great pride. The, I'm pleased to share that the executive report and videos that have been shared today are posted district required for all to view. And on that note, I'd like to extend appreciation to our communications director Sadler and the communications team for putting together these excellent videos. And I know that those videos really speaks to the clarity, to the good work that is happening and bringing the strategic end to life. Today is no exception. We are pleased today to share a video entitled Transforming School Spaces, Creating Safe and Inspiring Opportunities, I mean, improvements. And I think trustees will agree in many of the, and you see this during this as well. Some of the good ones happen and as we continue to engage in this work, it's really creating learning environments for us. I'd like to invite secretary treasurer to introduce the video that speaks six to this particular strategic priority. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Lucy. Today, we celebrate the transformation of whole spaces to create a safe and inspiring learning environment. In this video, we shine a spotlight on the recent seismic upgrade and building addition to Tomsett Elementary School, a pivotal project aimed at enhancing the structural integrity of the school. Experience transformation as we unveil, modernize the facilities, and hear from students, staff about impact of these improvements on teaching and learning. Through captivating visuals and testimonials, discover firsthand how these upgraded spaces are facilitating dynamic learning opportunities and promoting innovation. Additionally, we chased a revamped outdoor learning area, playground enhancement, and introduction of a new center corner designed to enrich the student experience. Join students with inspiring, providing students with inspiring spaces that empower their educational journey. Together, let's embark on a virtual tour that highlights the district's creation, creating safe, welcoming, and conducive learning environment for every learner. Finally, on behalf of senior staff, I want to express our sincere gratitude to our Richmond Project team and facility staff who are dedicated to providing this learning environment for all students and staff. Thank you.
As part of Strategic Priority Three, Optimized Facilities and Technology, the district is committed to improving our facilities to provide a learning environment that is safe, secure, accessible, and inspires innovation and creativity. The district has made a number of updates to our schools and will update many more schools in the years to come. In this video, we'll take a closer look at one recent upgrade at Tomsett Elementary School and explore how these upgraded spaces are facilitating dynamic learning opportunities and fostering innovation.
I've been here like since kindergarten and right now, like I'm in grade seven. The school used to be like much smaller before and it was like less modern, but now it's like much bigger. It's like expanded by so much. I think there are like an extra few classrooms.
We just have more room now. Like the library has been like made bigger and there's like a new wing.
It's more modern looking. I think it's like much more welcoming.
Students and staff love our new building. We were able through this project to be able to take a 70-year-old school in one of the fast-growing communities in our area to bring it into the 21st century and to provide a learning space for kids that is dynamic, interactive, safe, and just a fun place for kids to learn to be themselves. In terms of just making the building better place for kids to learn, we neutralized the paint. We created real open learning spaces. Ventilation was improved at the same time, upgraded whiteboards and projectors and just things that helped to make the school a more vibrant and exciting place to be.
And what I love about it, just really modern and I love the attention of detail that it has.
I like how the library is bigger because there's now the corner where there are little sitting couches. There's more space for us to work.
There's also more space for shelves so we can move them around more and they're more accessible for kids who aren't tall enough to reach for the books.
In terms of inclusion for our kids, we have some specialized places in our building. We have an alcove or a nook where we bring together some of our special learners to be able to work collaboratively in the hallway with support.
There's a lot of new changes in our school. I have a little brother, he's in kindergarten and he's getting used to the school and he goes to the sensor area to learn and get help.
Tomsett, our school has a really good courtyard, which I love. It's like for two years when I was in grade four and grade five, we used to go there every day and just clean it up. And it just gave me back memories when I used to do it with my grandma in my courtyard at home.
I think space is one of the biggest thing. We transformed the library. We took out the computer lab to create a bigger and wider space so that we can have this learning common area to gather, to collaborate, for staff to explore what projects we can actually further bring into the classroom and bring in for the students as well. In terms of classroom and in terms of library, we have designed more window space. So there's more natural lighting. It makes the students feel more comfortable, more engaged, and more calm and ready to learn. In general, when you walk into a classroom, you feel that you have more space within the design. We really look at the details, how actually would design impact students' learning.
Our school added swings and the sandpit, which is really popular for kindergarteners. I think this helps them because they can unleash their creativity by building structures.
I like that we've added the swings back because lots of people are enjoying them. I like it because there's more open space around so people can run and like exercise and like have fun.
The new things is for everybody to enjoy. All students in the school are welcome.
Any comment?
That was great, great.
I would just make a note because it's about Tomsett. It's that's that. I happen to be a brand-new trustee and Tomsett was my, one of my schools. And I witnessed amazing collaboration with everybody, teachers and EIA. It was just, it was my first experience seeing something like that and it was really rich. It was making me feel really proud. I just want to thank the videos fantastic. So the department, they professional, done. Thank you. So approval of the minutes of meetings. A record of an incoming of the board held today, March 13, 2024. And we have the regular meeting of the board held today, March 13, 24. Asked for approval. For a mover, a seconder, please. Moved by trustee Beliza, seconded by trustee Yang. All those in favor? Carried. Oh, pardon me, opposed? Carried. Okay, business arising from prior minutes. We have the 2024, 2025 Annual Budget Bylaw. And we have a report from the secretary treasurer.
Thank you, chairperson. The report is on page 15 of the board meeting package. And the new budget bylaw, the budget statements are pages 7 to 32. Pages 33 to 63 is the fiscal plan, providing detailed narratives of budget processes, major components of the budget, alignment between budget and strategic plan. The 2023, 24, 25 Annual Budget prepared in accordance with the public sector accounting standards, following the School Act, Budget Transparency and Accountability Act, and the related regulations and the ministry policies. The total annual budget is approximately $365 million, including $275 million operating fund, $66 million in special purpose fund, and $24 million in capital fund. The focus of the annual budget is on inspired learners. That means the district will continue to deliver high-quality public education to our students and the budget will provide critical support to the system. Finally, I'd like to close my report by expressing our sincerity to our additional partners for their feedback, their support through this budget process. And also gratitude to our finance staff who have put in hours and exceptional work to these reports. So that is my report. Thank you, chairperson.
Thank you. The recommendation from the secretary treasurer is that the Board of Education of School District Number 38 Richmond approve the 2024, 25 Annual Budget by way of three readings of the 2024, 25 Annual Budget Bylaw. Do I have consensus that three readings of the 2024, 25 Annual Budget Bylaw take place in this meeting? Trustee, did you agree? Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I just didn't want to see. Okay, thank you. I will read the first reading of the bylaw in full. Annual Budget Bylaw. A bylaw of the Board of Education of School District Number 38 Richmond, called Board, to update the annual budget board for the fiscal year 2024, 25, 25, sorry, pursuant to section 1, 1, 3 of the School Act, R S B C, 1996, B 412, as amended from time to time, called the Act. One, the board has complied with provisions of the Act, ministerial orders, and Ministry of Education and Childcare policies. We spend the annual bylaw adopted by this bylaw. Two, this bylaw may cited as a School District Number 38 Richmond Annual Budget Bylaw for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Three, the act statement two, showing the estimated revenue and expense for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year and the total bylaw amount of $365,292,289 for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year, prepared in accordance with the Act. Four, statement two, are adopted at the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the first reading? Moved by trustee Yang, seconded by trustee Dublany. Thank you. I now call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. I will now the second reading of the law in summary as trustees have the full law in front of you. The annual bylaw has been paired in accordance with the rule Act, ministerial orders, and street policies. Total budget for the 24, 25 fiscal year amounts $365,292,289. Statement two, four, and schedule two to four are adopted as the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Then I have a mover and seconder for the second reading. Trustee Sargent, sorry, went blank. Seconded by trustee Isa. Sorry, are there any questions or discussions, trustee Sargent?
Thank you very much. Well, I'll make it quick. I just wanted to say that I'm, as a governor of the system, I'm very, very proud of the process that we have and especially the inclusive processes where stakeholders are very much involved in a meaningful way with the budgeted working group and also the casual conversations that our panel team has with our partners. I'm sure that we are heard. And the fiscal plan in the package outstanding. And I need to require, you know what they say about information, information out. It's extremely well done. And I just wanted to say, I feel as a governor that we're being very open, very transparent in a very accessible way that people can understand this document. Sometimes all of the financial, you know, reports are difficult and time-consuming. And so this was great. And then I really wanted to thank our partners for always taking it as very serious work and really making themselves available to make sure that we hear what they think. And I think that's really part of, I know it's part of our success. And then to connect this to strategic plan and planning. So it's really remarkable. And I know we're supposed to be doing what we really do, do it on the ground. We make sure that we have, we have discussions around aligning our goals with budget. And so I wanted to thank the last comment, financial staff led by our secretary treasurer, who have so much confidence in the department. I say this many times, good things happen in the classroom. So I really want So I really wanted to thank our financial staff. Thank you.
Trustee Yang, followed by trustee Beliza.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. First of all, I just wanted to say that this is a great budget. And as the secretary treasurer and trustee Sargent has already conveyed their gratitude to, I just want to share mine as well for everybody involved in this process. The financial team, our secretary treasurer, our stakeholders, everybody from top to bottom for making this a seamless process and a collaborative, truly collaborative process. So I just, a few comments and then a question as well. You know, what's up for me in this budget or, you know, the really thoughtful proposals that we have? We have tier and EA allocations and track TTO positions as part of these proposals. And I think that will do some good with easing staffing pressures across our schools. We also have continued support and implementation for the Indigenous-focused graduation requirement. And that's something that stands out for me as well because, you know, as we're on this journey of truth and regulation, you know, we really want to make sure that the learners of today have those options in the classroom to pursue those studies and education. And, you know, last year was a year when I had city center as a school liaison. But, you know, seeing firsthand how administration in these large schools are working hard to support our learners, I think, by providing them with at least time and support, I think, is really important as well moving forward. So no, I think a good budget. Now, the one question I do have was just circling back to the same question I had during committee of the whole last month. And that relates to mental health supports that we have in our district. And just, I was wondering if the secretary treasurer could comment on that and to what extent we are providing those supports in our district.
Absolutely. Thank you, trustee Yang. Through the chair, I'm happy to respond to your questions. As a system, Richmond District, we provide phenomenal support to our students in the area of mental health and also provide support for staff as well in mental health as well as on this. So the system operating budget and as this mentioned, you know, by using, in conjunction with the SEF funding, we have all in position in our, in our school. Elementary school area councilors, we have 122 FTEs. Secondary school counselors, we have 31 FTEs. So together we're talking about more than 43 dedicated counselors supporting our students. And I have to say this is over the collective agreement obligations and that demonstrates our commitment to student mental health. We also have a curriculum coordinator or counseling positions, teaching positions as well as a mental health content. So we appreciate, you know, our teach staff, our counselor providing the support. That, in that, in these areas, the total budget is $5.5 million. In addition, this district has a dedicated mental health programs in place to serve our students. The new initiative right now we're implementing, we have implemented. The program is called Integrated Child Youth Program. So that program, right now, we have professional staff for, support staff for, and the total budget is $1 million. So this is in conjunction with Vancouver Coastal Health. This is a joint project between the health system and the education system to support students in this community. We also have Community Link Program and that's also a dedicated program to support adolescent mental health. We have support worker, youth workers, and total budget is close to $1 million as well. Mental health in schools program is another ministry support program. It is small, however, do have service and supply in that budget to support our students. So with the total support for the mental health, it's about $7.5 million total included in the budget. In addition, the district, we, in order to take care of students, we take care of the adults, our staff. We are spending, we have a number of staff wellness initiatives, including Healthy Workplace Initiative. We provide vaccination programs to our staff. And we have having counseling, a joint health and safety committee and training. Hearing, those are just ergonomic assessment and respiratory testing. Those are just some impulses that we have led by HR department. So in total, we have about $7.5 million slated for health initiatives. However, I want to add this. I want to echo trustees' comment here. We are, as a system, budget is one thing. We have budget, but we have wonderful professional staff in our system, whether it's our teachers, whether it's our EAs, and also, you know, custodians. All the adults in our buildings, we provide support to our students. It could be just a custodian who, I don't mean just a custodian, but I mean custodian is not designated for this support work. However, it could be a custodian who provide that safe space for our students. So as a system, as we are working together, it takes a village to raise. Thanks. Thank you.
I want to thank the secretary treasurer for that extended response because I think it, you know, I think in terms of our vision and the words we express, our commitment on this file to do more work is there. Part of my curiosity, as trustee always, is to ask, you know, how are we actually doing this on the ground? So I really do thank you for that response because, you know, the budget choices and the decisions we make at table really do matter. And, you know, I think the point about our increased support, more and more supports that we're putting on the ground is good work. And I'm certain of that. And just thinking of the incredible mental health challenges that folks from all walks of life are facing in this day and age. It's challenging as a human, not just as a trust. And so my worry is whether or not, or within our context, whether or not our school district is enough to take care of the, that we're responsible for. And, you know, everyone agrees when that's, students need to be well able to learn. And staff, I think you've already alluded to this as well. They need to be well as well to educate and support our work in the district. So it's my view that, you know, our system, you know, within our local context and in the greater context of public education, I think we need to continue that hard work in meeting the needs of students and since mental health. And as I said already, budgets and fiscal choices are part of that. So that, I think, the challenge really rests on ourselves, a school district within our system, with coming up with creative and targeted solutions always and have them meet them up fiscally. And I say this with full understanding of further advocacy also extrawarranted in this issue because as budget constraints come from senior levels of government, that's where our voices need to be as well. So, but all in all, like I said, the budget proposals and the holistic approach to make sure that we have a strong public education system that supports learners and ensuring our system functions, I think we achieve just that in our budget and so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Trustee Lisa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the executive staff, lady officers of the secretary treasurer for the great work in preparation of the budget and consultations with our scholars in reuniting this budget with our strategic priorities in the needs of these two students. My question, Madam Chair, would, we have $365 million budget and how much would that be in terms of funding? That has not been funded by the ministry. Would that include if we have any temporary resident prejudice grants? And is that sustainable? And if there are any challenges that we're facing in the future?
Thank you, trustee Lisa, for that question through the chair. Yes, $365 million, that's our operating budget, estimated budget. Throughout the year, especially after September and October, we, in the recent two years, we have seen significant increase in unfunded ministries supported international students. Students, they come in with their parents on temporary working permit. They are funded, they are supposed to be funded by the ministry. The ministry do fund them. However, we receive these new students throughout the year after September. And you know, the ministry funding is based on the September 30th counts. So just in last year, as an example, for, I mean, the current year, 2024, we have received over 200 new students who are, whose parents are on working permit. And because coming after September, there's the funded count, we don't receive for these students. However, you know, based on our financial departments, the department's prudent financial managers, we are able to accommodate students. But as you heard from BCS, I think one of the BCS motions in the past week was about this unfunded students. So BC, we have, as a province, we've seen a lot more unfunded international students come in after September. So yeah, we do encourage ministry to continue to look at the possibility of funding those students. Thank you.
So to follow up, what are the other items in our budget that's not funded by the ministry? Are they sustainable?
Our main changes, of course, is in the staffing cost. As you know, 90% of our operating budget is manpower costs, right? That's salaries and benefits. So with salaries, one portion that was not specifically funded was the, I think, the staff, whoever has, different employee groups have different arrangement in terms of increments. So some employee groups are not funded for those, you know, yearly increment increases on their salary steps. So that's number one. Number two, we have experienced in the last several years, as Sperratt alluded to, is the benefit increase. One is the EICPPP, the rating increase from federal government passed down to employers. And the other one, the increase is substantial. Our estimate is around $1 and that's not specifically funded. Rich because we are projecting higher enrollment growth. So we are able to manage, again, we really tight ship here in Rich. We're able to manage at the state. But I did hear from my other secretary treasurer colleagues in some smaller districts, especially if you're experiencing enrollment decline, it becomes unmanageable to a certain extent. So yeah, it's another area that ministry might want to take a look at to provide more sustainable funding. Thank you.
Local capital reserves still okay with so far as this?
Yeah, local capital reserves are mainly to cover the future district supported capital assets. And largest is the component of our local reserve, of course, for acquisition new capital projects decided or determined by the board in the first. So we're good. Thank you.
I see no more. I now call question. All those in favor?
So my question is that we have read the third time for us? Do you have read the third time?
Yes, this is for the second reading. So, okay, so all those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Second reading is carried. We'll now read the third reading of the bylaw as trustees have the full bylaw in view. The annual budget bylaw has been prepared in accordance with the School Act, ministerial orders, industry policies. The total budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year amounts to $365,292,289. Statement two, four, and schedules two, two, four are adopted the annual budget of the board for the fiscal year 2024-25. Can I have a mover and seconder for the third reading? Thank you, trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by trustee Wong. Are there any questions or discussions? I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The third and final reading is carried. The 2024-25 annual budget bylaw has been read a first, second, and third time, is passed and adopted this 24th day of April 2024. We now have a further recommendation. Further, that board authorized Chairperson of the Secretary Treasurer to sign the 2024-25 annual budget bylaw and submit the bylaw together with 2024-25 annual budget, Ministry of Education and Childcare for June 30, 2024. Can I have a mover and seconder for the motion? Moved by trustee Yang, seconded by trustee Sargent. All in favor? Thank you. Oh, pardon me. I didn't ask any questions or discussions. I guess we're not, okay, so pardon me. The motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for your work and contribution to the annual budget process. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of 2024-25 capital bylaw. We have a report from secretary treasurer.
Thank you, Chairperson. My report is on page 64 of the board meeting package. This bylaw process is to flow the capital project implementation process required the Ministry of Education and Childcare. As you can see from the board meeting report, the Ministry of Education and Childcare, they responded to the district's 24-25 annual five-year capital plan, including major and minor capital programs. We have, we submitted the 24-25 annual five-year capital plan last year, June, June 2023. So they have provided the response letter to the school district. And according to section 143 of the School Act, the Board of Education is required to adopt a capital bylaw for implementation of the five-year capital plan. So board, you, in view, you have staff's recommendation that the Board Education should approve capital bylaw by three readings. That's my report. Thank you, Madam.
I have consensus that the readings of the 24-25 cap bylaw take play in this meeting. I have consensus that the readings of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five cap bylaw take, take place in this meeting. So, uh, I, I just bring that, uh,
Do you want consensus?
Page sixty six?
No, around sixty four.
Recommentation? That's what I'm, I'm asking for. Do I have consensus that the three reading, the twenty 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 four, twenty five capital bylaw take place in this meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I will read the first reading of the bylaw in capital bylaw number twenty twenty four, twenty five dash C P S D thirty eight dash zero one, cap plan twenty four, twenty five. Whereas, in accordance with the second forty two of, of the School, the, the board of education of the, of the school district number thirty eight Richmond, herein after called the board, admitted a capital plan to the Minister of Education. Herein after called the minister. And the minister has approved the capital plan or, or has proved a capital plan with modifications. Now, therefore, in accordance with section one forty three of the School Act, the board has prepared this capital bylaw and agrees to do the following. A, authorize the secretary treasurer to execute a capital, capital project funding agreement, or agreements, related to the capital projects contemplated by the capital plan or the capital plan with modification. B, upon, upon minister approval to proceed, commence the capital project, projects, and proceed diligently and uses its best efforts to complete each capital project substantially as directed by the minister. C, observe and comply any order, regulation, and or policy of the minister may be applicable to the board or the capital projects. And, and D, maintain pro- pro books of account and other information and documents with respect to the affairs of the capital project or projects as may be prescribed by the minister. Now, therefore, the board enacts as follows. The capital bylaw of the board for the twenty twenty four, twenty five capital plan as approved by the minister to include the supported capital project or projects specified in the letter addressed to the secretary treasurer and superintendent dated April ninth, twenty twenty four, is hereby opted. This cap bylaw may be cited as school district number thirty eight written, capital bond number twenty twenty four slash twenty five dash C P S D thirty eight dash zero, zero, one. Can I have a mover and second for the first reading? Trustee Belisa, seconded by trustee Yang. Thank you. All those in favor?
Can I have a question? Is that the sentence on the second, second, uh, rule is that Ministry, Ministry of Education, do I need to add childcare?
On the second, the, the second sentence? Okay, so let me just. Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, we've added that, that will be. Um, okay, so what's I, sorry, sorry. Um, all those, those in favor, that's where it was at. Thank you. Uh, opposed? None. The first reading, reading is carried. We'll now read, read the reading of the by, the by in summary, as, as trustee, the full bylaw in front of you. That the Board of Education Richmond and approval by law number twenty twenty four, twenty five dash C P S D thirty eight dash zero, one. Through the bylaw, the board agrees to authorize the secretary treasurer to execute the annual program funding agreement and to proceed, proceed the approved projects diligently according to applicable laws, regulations, and ministry policies. Can I have a mover and skinder for the second reading? Moved by trustee Sergeant, seconded by trustee Hamaguchi. Those in favor? Any questions or discussions? Now call the question, oh, me. I, I now call question. All, all those in favor? I did, so, thank you. Uh, the second, second read is carried. I will now read, read the third reading of the bylaw. As trustees have the, have the full bar in front, in front of you. That the, the board education and approve capital bylaw number twenty twenty four, twenty five dash C P S D thirty eight dash zero, one. Through the bylaw, the board agrees to authorize the secretary treasurer to execute the annual program funding agreement and proceed the, the approved projects diligently according to all applicable laws, regulations, and ministry policies. Can I have a mover and a second for the third reading? Moved by trustee Blotny, seconded by trustee Wong. Are there, there any questions or discussions? I now call question. All, all those in favor? The third and, and final being is carried. Twenty twenty four, twenty five capital law has been, been read first, second, and time, passed and adopted twenty fourth, fourth day of April, April, twenty twenty four. So we have a, item C, we have a report from our secretary treasurer uh, for bus board, pardon me, board approve, approve us writers for twenty twenty four, twenty five.
Thank you, chairperson. Board policy five two two and the regulation five two two R provide guidelines for the transportation of students to and from school. The regulation outlines the criteria used to determine eligibility for school services, servicing services. So the detailed bus service information is provided in the report. A Board of Education has recommend, recommendation before you is recommend that the thing services uh, for those students, whom safe, safe, they concerns, concerns have been identified will continue for the twenty four, twenty five school. And, and for others, the busing services will be reviewed, reported to the Board of Education according, according to policy five two two, five two two R on a continuous annual basis. So I ha- have, uh, staff, director of, uh, facilities, Chris Wilkins online, and also transportation manager, uh, Joe Canlis online, if trustees have any questions. Thank you, chairperson.
Any questions? Comments? Oh, go, go and trust sergeant.
A little recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Um, can I have a tender? Trust trustee Hamaguti? All those in favor? Motion care carried. Thank you. Okay, now, now we are on new, new business, item eight, eight, eight. Which, which is the twenty four, twenty five school, school site position charge bylaw. I just have a, have a question. Um, forgive me for a second, can? Thank you. The next, yes, yes, the next item on the agenda is approval of the twenty twenty four, twenty five school site acquisition, acquisition charge bylaw. We have a report for, for secretary treasurer.
Uh, thank you, chairperson. Uh, the school site acquisition charge, this is established in accordance with sections five seventy one to five eighty, eighty one of the Local Government Act. So this is a charge per dwelling unit to be paid by residential developers. The charge is, is collected by local government, in our case, the city of Richmond. It is transferred to the school districts to help, help us fund new school, school acquisition, the result of, of the new rental development. So this recommendation for you is Board of Education approve the school, school site position charge bylaw by way of, via of three readings. Uh, these are calculated based on the, the full provided in the school site acquisition charge regulation under the authority of the Local Government Act. Currently, the rates applicable to Richmond School District is maxed according, according to the regulation. Therefore, this bylaw does not trigger a change in these rates. Uh, however, the ministry does require the Board of Education to adopt a bylaw uh, based on the regulation and also the Local Government Act, um, on an annual basis. So that's my report. Thank you, chairperson.
Thank you. The recommendation from secretary treasurer is that the Board of Education adopt the, the, now, is it acceptable to read an acronym or need to read out schools acquisitions?
Not every, every time.
Oh, good, thank you. Uh, adopt the SSC bylaw number twenty twenty four, one, to twenty twenty four, twenty five school site acquisition acquisition charge, S S A C C by way of three readings. Do I, do I have consensus that three readings of the twenty twenty four, twenty five site acquisition charge bylaw take place in this meeting? Okay, thank you, thank you. I will read the first reading of the bylaw in full. S S A C bylaw number twenty twenty four dash one to set the school site acquisition charge. Whereas, school district thirty eight Richmond, hereafter, after called the board, is, is an eligible school district pursuant to division ten point one, a Local Government Act, which the board has, has stated and an eligible school site requirement in its approved twenty four, or twenty twenty five cap plan. And whereas, the board submitted eligible school, school site requirement pursuant to its capital plan to the Ministry of Education and Chair, to the board consults and received approval from each local government with, with the school district pursuant to the Local Government Act. And whereas, the site acquisition component of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, five year capital plan for school district number thirty eight Richmond was approved by the Minister of Education and Childcare on the ninth day of April, twenty twenty four, with the minister requiring that the school site acquisition charge capital bylaw be adopted by the, the board within sixty days. Now, therefore, the board enacts as follows. One, this, this bylaw may be cited as district number for thirty eight Richmond capital bylaw to set, set the twenty four, twenty twenty five school site acquisition charge. Two, eligible development means, A, a subdivision land in school district number thirty thirty eight rent, or, or E, new construction, option, or extension in school district number thirty eight eight that increases the number of self containing units on a parcel. Three, pursuant to division ten point one of the Local Government Act, the board establishes the changes, pardon me, the charges applicable to the prescribed category of eligible development for the school district in accordance with following formula. S S A C equals brackets, brackets, A times B slash C bracket times D. Where SSC equals school site acquisition charge applicable to each prescribed category of eligible development. A equals seven, five million, the approved value of, of land required to the board's eligible, eligible school requirements. B equals thirty five, five percent pursuant to section nine, nine thirty, point five brackets, one, one. C equals eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty, number of approved eligible development units. And, and D equals a factor set by provincial regulation for each prescribed category of eligible development. Four, the school site acquisition charge charges applicable to the categories of eligible development as prescribed by B C regulation seventeen dash zero, zero, for the school district are set out in the table below. And, anyone has the table? Five, the school's acquisition charge does not come, come into it until sixty days after the, the bylaw was regulated by the province. Can I have a mover and a second for the first, first reading? Moved, moved by me, trustee Yang, ended by trustee Belisa. I now call, I now call, all those, those in favor? Thank you. The, the first is carried. I will now read the second reading of the bylaw in summary, as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The S S A C bylaw number twenty twenty four dash one to set the school site acquisition charge for twenty twenty four, twenty five are adopted to approve the annual eligible school proposal in accordance with the Local Government Act. Can I have a mover and a second for the second reading? Moved by trustee Wong, seconded by trustee Hamaguchi. Um, all's in favor? Oh, pardon me, sorry.
I have a comment? Um, yeah, it's really a comment in regards to the S A S and how they are, they are not all up to speed of what is needed. And as you can see by the, the need for the center school, school parcel, so, fifty five million dollars and what we're, what we're collecting from developers is that, that, that we're collecting the maximum amount, which is clearly not enough, enough. And so I think this board is on, on the record for saying, uh, when developments are happening, meaning a school site is of utmost importance. And so I know, uh, B C S J, our association, is putting together again, another advocacy piece around this to take to the government, um, to have the discussion where these maximum allowances are, are just not appropriate for twenty twenty four. And so I will approve, um, the maximum amount, but I, but I really applaud our, our work, continued work to make sure that when, when this work comes out from B C S J, that we put it on agenda and, and that we have a broad discussion with, with the R D. And again, now we're at the, the maximum, there's much more we can do. But I, but I really highlight that there's an inappropriate, not, not enough amount. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Trustee Yang.
Thank, thank you, person. I know it's a lot of reading for you tonight, so hang in there. Um, Mike, just a quick question for the secretary treasurer. Um, do you have the, uh, the amount collected from, from the school's acquisition charges uh, in twenty two, twenty three, and, uh, twenty twenty three, twenty four so far? I know your hasn't ended yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Of that information?
Um, I think every year we collect about two million dollars, uh, in that range. But I can, can get specific numbers for you, for you after this, this meeting. I don't have it at, at my fingertips, but currently we are sitting on, our total balance of, of the S A current is about fourteen, in, over, over fourteen, fourteen million.
And, yeah, I, I think.
That being collected to the over asked number of years.
Yeah, I think some, some more info would be helpful, just context.
Yeah.
Happy to, to support this.
Can I have trustee Lisa follow, follow trustee Blotny?
Thank, thank you, madam. Uh, if we base on this figure of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty for, for the number of approved eligible development units, and if taken into consideration, they, she'll say, one thousand per unit, it will only be like sixteen million something, right? And if we are, uh, needing seventy five million for the, the contractions of the new, new schools. And, uh, this sixteen million, if we, we compare to thirty five percent per, 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 to section nine, three, seven, point five, only like twenty, twenty six percent. If this is, who are gonna, gonna cover rest of the, of the expenditure uh, in this particular, particular case?
Uh, sure, uh, thank, thank you trustee Belisa for the, for the question through the chair. Um, if we're, if we're looking at seventy five million dollars, because the S A, S S A C charges can only be used of, for site acquisition, only for purchasing land. So if we're looking at seventy five million dollars of land acquisition price tag, and we times that by thirty five percent, that's twenty six million dollars. Right now, we're sitting on somewhere between twenty fourteen and fifty million dollars. So we're twelve million shy, um, in, in this charge, we, we, we need, uh, uh, another twelve million to, to make up that thirty five percent of the, the total seventy five million dollar site acquisition charges. So question is, uh, going to fund the remain, the remainder will, number one source is. The remainder will, number one source is our, our board's local capital reserve. Um, we do have, have the board in the past asked, had set aside funding for, for future acquisition. Um, and, and, and the others of the funding, of course, will, will, if we have, have exalt our local capital reserves and, and also S S A C chart balance, then of course will, uh, because we're provincially funded the education system, so we'll have to look at our, uh, look to our funding partner, which is the provincial government, who is going to be the largest funding source for future site, site acquisition.
In effect, the minister, the provincial government will fight for the buildings?
Yeah, they, they, yes.
Whatever the deficiency we have.
Correct, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Trustee Tblotny?
Uh, yes, well, um, I, I agree with trustee sergeant, you know, should have discussed, know we've sent, sent letter before. Regarding the school site, site charges is, no, they're not adequate. Um, just wondering what is procedure, because they're really not, not set last, they're set by um, governing bodies. What is the procedure to, you know, for us to advocate to have, have those charts raised, I guess?
Yeah, thank you trustee Tblotny for that question. And through the chair, yes, um, the board can always advocate for additional site acquisition charges or the increase of the maximum allowable amount for the charges. Um, I, I would say, uh, the provincial government, because the, the Local Government Act is a provincial legislature. Yeah, yes. Advocacy will have to go through our co-M L As and, uh, you know, that would be the appropriate route.
Yeah, perhaps, uh, our, our necks maybe could bend their, their air a little um, when we schedule, but, but I'm good. It would be a, be appropriate.
Okay, I just want to confirm everybody that, that I had everyone seconded, seconded for this reading. Because, because, okay, I just wanted to make sure. We had our questions and discussion. I now call the question, oh, pardon. Yes, I now call the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Uh, seconding is carried. I will now read the third reading of the bylaw, as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The S S A C by law number twenty twenty four dash one to set, to set school site acquisition charge for twenty twenty four, twenty five are adopted to approve the annual eligible school proposal in accordance with the Local Government Act. Local Government Act. Can I have a mover and a seconder for third reading? Trustee Belisa, seconded by trustee sergeant, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Are there any questions, discussions? Okay, I now question. All those in favor?
Go with it.
That's for the third reading, meeting now. I'm calling the question, the, the end. To be, um. So everybody's in favor? The third and final reading is carried. Seven, the twenty twenty four, twenty five school site acquisition charge by law have been read first, second, and third, third. Is passed and adopted this twenty fourth day of April, twenty twenty four. Thank you. Just. All right, we are now, we're now at opportunity for, for questions from the public. Okay, not, not seeing any. We standing reports. Audit, trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chair, Chairperson. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May fifteenth, twenty 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 fourth.
Thank you. Education is myself, minutes of the meeting being held February fourth, fifteenth are attached. And um, a meeting was held on February seventeenth. Next meeting is scheduled Wednesday, May fifteenth at six P M. Facilities and building, trustee Hamaguchi.
Minutes of the meeting held on, oh, moved on me. Hang on a second. Okay. Minutes of the meeting held on March sixth are attached information. Meeting held on Wednesday, April thirty. Next, next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May fifth at four thirty. Thank you.
Trustee Sergeant, uh, um, finally legal.
Thank you very much. Have the minutes from March sixth meeting, meeting are attached for, for information. And I, and I do have a recommendation, which I'll, I'll read and look for a second. Whereas the Board of Education of District thirty eight Rich, Richmond is for expenses by the trustees in the discharge charge of thirties. They were involved in accordance with the School Act. Board of Education, School District thirty eight, approves trustees expenses paid during three month period ending in March thirty first, twenty twenty four, in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars and ninety four cents.
Can I have a seconder? Trustee Belisa?
Yes.
All's in favor? Thank you. Carried. Uh, Policy committee, Tblotny.
Yes, well, um, Policy Committee is hard at work. Policy Committee has two notices of mo- motion. First one is, um, let's see, two hundred and, two, two hundred, one, and, and two hundred are two. Trustees have responsibilities and code of, code of ethic. And um, this is the ground Ministry of B C School Trustees Association have, have cleverly developed provincial, provincial criteria for school trustee code of, code of conduct. Primary goal of this, this initiative is to offer to trustees clear guidance regarding their roles and responsibilities in terms of their conduct. These codes of conduct can aid boards in emphasizing their fundamental duties, which include delivering educational programs, promoting safe and inclusive schools and workplace environments. And um, trustees, uh, got together, um, September eighteenth, uh, for an initial discussion and Policy Committee. We held, um, two workshops in October and November. Um, once and it was, uh, the Policy was shown in February twelfth at our, in, in Cameron, and then, uh, was also brought forth for, at, on, at our, at our April public policy committee meeting. And so therefore, for bringing this, this note of motion will come forward our May twenty second meeting.
Thank you.
Lots of work has been done there. And, uh, notice of motion for proposal is for minor revisions to policy two oh four R creation and revision of policy and relations. And, um, this is the proposed minor revisions are, uh, guided primarily by they need to align the creation and revision of policy and regulation with understanding through a D D E O lens. Um, and it's specifically provincial government has helped and posted a document titled technology in, in this context. And so, so, um, we've made, uh, minor, so this, this would not into the, the, uh, the state or education parts, um, pro- process. So, so, uh, notice of motion also, so will come May twenty second.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, one, one sec. Uh, meeting was held April fifteenth, was as stated, and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May thirteenth at eleven A M.
Thank you. Now we're on to Board Committee and the represented reports. Council, Board Liaison Committee. A meeting was held April third, twenty twenty four. The next meeting is scheduled for September of twenty twenty four. B C T A?
Thank you very, very much, Chairperson. So, um, as the agenda notes, we, uh, the B C S T A did have our, we, we had our annual general meeting. That was held between, uh, the eighteenth and the first. And I have to say, it's, it's, it was a productive session, um, uh, and, but, uh, to, so very, very advocacy motions on, on a range of important, um, uh, publication issues, and I'll just show you. Um, this includes child facilities and programs, uh, for those, um, deferred maintenance, uh, capital funding for aging and green infrastructure, um, funding for temp, temporary register, uh, temporary resident registrations, um, as well as a, a motion to, uh, invite student delegates to the B C S T in the future. So overall, very productive session. And, and we continue with that work. Thank you.
Thank you. B C, B C, B C, Tblotny?
Yes, um, uh, by election, the trustee direct position representing Thompson, Okanagan region on, on the B C P C Board of Directors uh, was, was held virtually on, on April fifteenth, and I added, and at the meeting, Rob Zandi from Okanagan, since Milken was elected acclamation. And so, so we welcome Ramra to the B C P C Board and trustee Alan Shell uh, for, held that position for quite time and did a lot of uh, very important work for trustees and B C P C, and he will be missed. And, uh, and we wish, uh, Rob Zandi, or trustee Zandi, um, uh, all the best in his role. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, twelve respondents for action. I'm going to read the motion um, with regards to Q P local seven, six, sixteen, um, guarding the National Day of Recognition. Where, where a Board of Education wishes to express court to Q Q people seven, six, sixteen, their desire to recognize death and any of workers, workers on the job. Be it of, that the, that the Board of Education, Richmond officially rec, recognizes April twenty eighth as the National Day of Recognition for workers killed or injured in the job with a one minute cessation of work at eleven A M on Friday, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. And further that, flags in the district will be lowered to half mast on that day. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by trustee Wong, seconded by trustee, trustee Hamaguchi. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carried. And, item thirteen, can, can I have a moment to adjourn? Thank you. And seconder, please. Trustee Wong, and was moved, um, by trustee Yang, thank you. Those in favor? And carried. Thank you. Everyone?